This conference will now be recorded.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, good evening, everybody. The Stratford Zoning Commission is now open for our public hearing. All members, regular members are present as well as alternate members. Manos and Fredette are here. Jay, do we have the actual date of the, when these properties were posted? I forgot to ask you that.
So, per the executive order, the, none of the properties are posted. We're not putting signs up on anyone's property. And all the applications are required, I'm sorry, all the agendas are required to go up a minimum of 24 hours prior to any meeting. We've had our agendas up for weeks. I can tell you the date, if you give me a moment here. Okay. Agenda. Five twenty-seven. Okay, it looks like this was posted in the Town Clerk's office on May 6th.
Okay.
And that serves as the official notice per the Governor's Executive Order.
Right, and just for the record, all of these meetings, this is being held via a go-to meeting in accordance with the provisions set out by the Governor's Executive Order. Okay. In the interests of moving things along, I will read petition number one. Eight sixty-seven Barnum Avenue Cut Off, Petition of Vipul Gandhi Seeking An Approval Of A Liquor Location And Site Plan Review To Establish A Class A Package Store Permit In A CA Zone. Is the applicant present? And you might be unmuted, sir.
Yes, I am, I'm here.
Okay. Proceed. Tell us a little bit about what your, what your application is and what you're planning to do.
So basically, I'm, I would like to open a liquor store on the property as a retail shop. I've been in the business for thirteen years. I have another location in Ferry Boulevard.
Vipul. I'm gonna make the presentation, okay? All you have, all you have to do is be quiet, alright?
Okay.
I apologize. Mr. Chairman, Madam Secretary, members of the commission, my name is Barry Knott. I'm a lawyer with the firm of Knott, Knott and Doug, offices at sixteen fifty-six Main Street, Stratford. I'm here this evening on behalf of Mr. Vipul Gandhi, who lives in eight Ironwood Way, Orange, Connecticut. Vipul also owns the Stratford Beer Shop at two hundred Ferry Boulevard, Stratford. Now, among the exhibits that have been posted by Jay on your website are the certificates of mailing and nine exhibits. Now, I was looking at the, at the postings prior to tonight's meeting, and I noticed that exhibits one through seven and exhibit nine were included in the headline of certificates of mailing. So if you go to the certificates of mailing link, after you go through the four or five letters that I sent people, you'll see that there are photographs and a couple of other exhibits that I'm going to be making reference to right now. Exhibit one is a photo of the subject premises taken from the Dunkin' Donuts parking lot across the street. Exhibit two is a close-up of the front of the building taken from Barnum Avenue Cut Off. Exhibit three is another photo of the front of the building taken from the front of the barber shop next door to the west. Exhibit four is another photo of the front of the building taken from the northeastern edge of the property at Barnum Avenue Cut Off. Exhibit five is a photograph of the eastern side of the building where two railroad cars stacked parking spaces are located. These parking spaces are identified on the zoning location survey submitted with the application as existing two-car parking for apartment. Exhibit six is a photograph of the two-foot wide sidewalk between the front of the building and concrete pillars in the parking lot which protects the building from car traffic. Exhibit seven is a photograph of a small island to be landscaped in the parking lot and the paved portion of the street right of way. Now, those are the photographs, just to familiarize yourself with the property that we are talking about, I'm sure you've all driven by it a million times. I know I have. This is an application for special case and site plan approval of liquor location for a Class A liquor store permit pursuant to section fifteen point eight A of the zoning regulations. The subject premises is owned commercial, and as Jay points out in his administrative comments, a package store is a permitted, a commercial zone, and is consistent with the character of the surrounding neighborhood. As Jay also points out in administrative comments, the site does not abut any residential use, and his office, the Planning and Zoning Office, has no major regarding the distances from many other similar uses within the vicinity of the property. And I wanted to showcase administrative comments. In addition to the comments which I just mentioned, in his memo dated May eleven, two thousand twenty, he indicates, given that the prior use and proposed liquor store are both considered retail, one retail use changed through another would not require a waiver of parking to the Board of Zoning Appeals. This building previously housed a nail salon and a jewelry store on the first floor with a two-bedroom apartment on the second floor. As you know, liquor stores are permitted uses in the CA zone, as are jewelry stores and nail salons. All are retail uses under section seven point one point three of the zoning regulations, and all these uses have the same parking requirement twelve point five point four of the zoning regulations, to wit, one space for two hundred and fifty square feet of store area. So four spaces per thousand square feet, one for two hundred and fifty square. Most importantly, if you look at the liquor store use compared to a nail salon use or a jewelry store use, you will see that a liquor store use requires much less parking than
Mr. Knott, we lost your audio. I'm not sure if it's just on my side or are other people encountering?
All of it, yeah.
Yeah, I can't hear them.
Okay. Let's give him a chance to come back.
...a jewelry store or a nail salon. For example, someone in the liquor store will run in, spend five to fifteen minutes on it, and the other spend fifty for a nail salon. If they're going for a manicure, it will be at least thirty to forty-three. And inside this particular facility, we had four workstations, one as a nail store, where inside for between thirty, seventy-five minutes, with each manicurist working on a manicure or a pedicure for each patron. This nail salon use was in addition to the parking requirements for the jewelry store, which was located in the same building next door to the nail salon. This represents a substantial parking use far in excess of the six spaces that are available on the site. Such a scenario will never happen with a liquor store use at these premises. Where there were two stores before, there will only be one store now. Obviously, the proposed package store has benign impact from a parking perspective than the previous two uses. Jay goes on to discuss the existing parking spaces. He suggests that the applicant should secure some type of easement from the Connecticut Department of Transportation to better formalize the existing parking arrangement. This suggestion is made because the six parking spaces in front of the building do not actually fit within the property line, and some encroach over the front property line into the state of Connecticut right of way. Such a requirement to obtain an easement is not necessary. As Jay points out earlier in his comments, the parking situation at this site represents a non-conforming use which has carried over from the property owner to property owner, personal use to personal use over the years. Every one of the owners of this property since nineteen sixty-one, when the building was built, enjoyed the non-conforming use of this property without having to negotiate an easement from the state Connecticut Department of Transportation. My client should not have so either, and we do not agree to this condition, because to do so would be a violation of my client's rights as owner of a non-conforming use. On the other hand, Jay also indicates that the prior use of the property as a scooter repair facility has left oil spills all over the front parking lot, which should either be resurfaced, repaired, cleaned, or re-strike. He also said that the parking space should be reserved for the two, second floor apartment, which would be blocked if it was occupied by a liquor store customer. As you can see from the zoning location survey, which has been
Lost again.
Yeah, I think we lost again, Barry.
Both the parking spaces to the left of the building are reserved for the second floor tenants and are so designated I'm sorry?
Hey Barry, a couple times you, you cut in and out, so just be aware, your connection's not the best. I don't think it's been any problems so far.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm almost finished anyway.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Additionally, I make reference to exhibit eight. Now, exhibit eight is not in the same link that the certificates of mailing were located. Exhibit eight is actually the only exhibit in the link that says exhibits, and it's an important exhibit, so I'd appreciate if you could take a look at it. This is a copy of the site plan upon which I have highlighted in gray with white stripes the parking lot of the building, which
We lost you again, Barry.
... Furthermore, this exhibit shows that the island at the curb will be wide in front of the building, landscaped by my client. The two-foot sidewalk immediately away from the building from the concrete pillars. So we are willing to stipulate to the improvements shown on exhibit eight. Now, the operation liquor store will be open Monday through Saturday, ten AM to ten PM, Sunday from ten AM to eight PM. During its open hours, there will be one employee on the premises who will be Mr. Gandhi. Reference exhibit nine, which is a copy of the zoning commission's special case permit, that's back in the, in the certificate of mailing link. This is a special case permit from August twenty-seventh, nineteen seventy-nine, provided for takeout restaurant at this site. This is a use which is similar to the one for which we are applying this evening, in the sense that, under both scenarios, the customer runs in, spends five or ten minutes picking up the product and leaves. Discusses the approval criteria under section fifteen point one, which is the liquor regulation, indicates that commission should take into consideration the proximity of premises to churches, schools, libraries, public playgrounds, or any place frequented by minors, together with the number of places having permits of any class allowing for the sale of alcoholic beverages in the immediate neighborhood. As Jay indicated in his administrative comments, the office of planning and zoning has no major concerns regarding the distances within the vicinity. Section twenty point two point one of the zoning regulation, of zoning regulation, sets forth a special case criteria and objectives to be the zoning commission in approving a special case application. Here you are, look at conformance with the requirements of the zone in which the property is located, the size and intensity of such use, the conformance with the town plan of development, traffic issues, emission of noise, light, smoke, odor, gas, dust, or vibration, and the effect of tax valuation on neighboring properties and potential police or fire hazards. As you can see from this presentation
Barry, are you there?
...is an approved use, then the underlying zone is consistent with the town plans of non-conformity of use of the property, the island at the curb be landscaped. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, questions from members, and if there's any part of the audio that you weren't clear on, you know, this is probably a good opportunity to do it, so either raise your hand or, so I can see you, or just seek my, okay, Commissioner Hendrick, you have the floor, sir.
Mr. Knott, I, we missed about half of your presentation, but I'll go with, so in the, in your, in your pictures, you said, one of the pictures shows, well, a couple of them show the exterior of the building. The exterior of the building is in hideous condition, siding is falling off, it's, it's on Main Street, it apparently, when I looked from the town website, there were three businesses there, I guess currently there are two. I'm assuming there are going to be some alterations made to the front of the building, but are they planning on doing anything with the siding, you know, gutters, stuff that's falling down to make, this is Barnum Ave, is our main, you know, one of our main passageways through town. Are we going to be cleaning up that site? The exterior aesthetics, I mean, I'm not, I'm not asking that they redo the facade, but at least, at the very least, put it into a, put it into a condition that Mr. Fredette won't need to go there for Blake in the next month.
Mr. Knott, did you get that question?
Doing anything to the, to the exterior of the building?
Well, I, I, aside from, aside from the paving that I was in attendance, are you not crewman?
I can't hear you.
Vipul, can you hear me?
You're breaking up.
Uh, Jay, you got a point?
Yeah, Jay Habanski, Barry, can you call in on your phone, please? Your, your, I think your wifi is going in and out.
Yes.
And we're getting very unclear audio from you, but you might be able to call directly in. Because we're really having trouble hearing what you're saying.
I'm gonna do that right now.
Okay, and then mute your computer once you're on, Barry.
Commission will stand at ease until Mr. Knott joins us. And for the record, I saw, Lam, you joined us?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right, Jay, I'm on the phone, I'm on the phone now.
Okay, just mute your computer.
Yes, I did. All right, now, can Vipul, can you hear me? Vipul?
Yes.
All right. Mr., one of the commissioners just asked if you were planning on doing any improvements to the exterior of the building, because he feels that it is in somewhat dilapidated condition.
Yes, whatever the repair need to be done, we will make, we will repair everything possible and make sure the building looks nice, obviously for a lot of good reasons, for my customer and for the, you know, for all the
What timeframe, what timeframe would you be able to make those improvements?
Uh, within three to four weeks.
And what would those improvements include?
Um, the improvement, I believe, is on the side of the building where the roof is. There's some panel nearby the gutters need to be replaced, and I will, I will try to get that completed and get it done nicely.
All right, thank you, Vipul.
Yeah.
Dear, you can hear a little bit of an echo in here.
Yeah, that's Barry's phone, it's echoing.
So my question, I mean, what does that mean, when, when he says we'll make it, I mean, it's, our Blake officer apparently has been there a number of times. The exterior of the building is, is in a dilapidated state, the roofing is old and deteriorating, the siding is mildewed and falling off, the stairwell on the left side is in rough shape, you got that old air conditioner, I don't know, is that how they're planning on conditioning that entire building with that old air conditioner hanging out? There's that old worn-out sign that says no parking on the side. The exhibit you had of the sidewalk, there was some, I don't know what that is below the windows, some mixture of some type of clapboard and strangle shake. I mean, I, this building needs to be put back into a condition that is consistent with the businesses. I don't know what that noise is. Getting annoying.
Everyone, everyone in the meeting, if you're not talking, please mute your, your device. Thank you.
Well, the exterior of the building is in hideous state, and is not in line with the type of businesses we're trying to promote in our town. And I'd like to see something a little more concrete than, we're gonna do something to make it a little nicer. I'd like to see something that, in writing, that says exactly what's going to be done, what, maybe even a, a
Well, my, my client is a new, a new owner of this property, and any, any condition pre-existed his acquisition of the property.
Yeah, I know, and he's looking for us for an approval to change something, and this is the time to do it. I mean, are we going to approve a, a business that goes into a hideous building like this that's fallen down and dilapidated? I'm not. You know, until I see that structure, you know, brought up to some kind of modern standard aesthetically, I, I can't support it. It's, you know, it's a new business, and even for somebody who's opening up a new business, you really want to attract people to a rundown building like that? I mean, what kind of clientele are you gonna bring? Every, every building that has come for us, every change, whatever it is, they typically will have some type of plan that shows what they're gonna do to the building to make it look appropriate. And, and this is not, I appreciate that it's a new, a newly purchased building, and I would think that, based on the condition, he got it for strong, and some of that money should be put into.
Well, Mike, I, I understand from Jay's email of yesterday that this hearing is going to be continued until the next meeting of the zoning commission, and that the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting is going to be kept open for public comment. And inasmuch as that is the case, I can provide you with a written document which would outline for you in chapter and verse exactly what my client's willing to do and the timing within which he's willing to do it.
Well, I guess we'll take a look at it when we see it and make a decision from there. At least, at least that's my thought on it. I mean, you know, unless we see something, I mean, Mr. Habanski's got a comment about the, the oil stains on the, in the parking lot, which I think are fair, but if we're worried about the oil stains in the parking lot, shouldn't we be worried about the dilapidated condition of the structure?
Well, I'm not saying you shouldn't, I'm just saying this is the first time the issue came up, as far as I'm concerned, and we're in a position to answer it prior to the time you vote at the next meeting.
All right, well, you know, I'm a builder, you know what I'm looking for, with any detail. All right, what is that noise? Holy crap.
Can we just take a second? Please make sure that you're muted if you're not talking, and Barry, I don't know if this is from your side, just make sure that your computer is muted.
Yeah, it is, Chris.
I think Barry's computer speakers need to be turned off.
His speaker and his microphone on his computer need to be turned off.
Yeah, the speaker is turned off.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Just go through the members. Mr. Vigliotti, do you have any questions?
I, I, my, my, my first thought is, are you intending to keep both businesses running? The establishment on Ferry Boulevard, as well as the one on Barnum Avenue?
Yes, yes, he's gonna operate both businesses. He's gonna work at the one on Barnum Avenue Cut Off, and I believe his daughter is gonna be working at the one on Ferry Boulevard.
That's all for me at this, at this time.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Francis, any questions?
Um, the only question, I mean, and I agree with Commissioner Hendrick, I looked at, I don't know if those are wood slats or that's vinyl, I just kind of Google mapped it really quick, because I kind of forgot that little tuck area right there. I'm not sure if it's wood slats or vinyl, but, I mean, it would be nice if it was a new business to, you know, make it look, you know, aesthetic to the area, I mean, it's a main strip, everybody goes to shop to those areas, you know, to maintain to look a strapper, but if Jay, do you have any concerns besides that oil in the driveway? Or the parking lot?
Um, well, I would echo the, I would echo the comments that, from both Commissioner Hendrick and, and yourself, that, you know, the, the facility probably could use a facelift. Other than that, the use is permitted, subject to zoning commission feeling comfortable with the, the application that's being presented in front of them. So I would, I would put it on to the applicant, as the applicant has already, I believe, volunteered to hopefully come up with a more detailed plan of action as to how they want. They are gonna present the business to one of the town's major thoroughfares. I mean, that's, that's all I really have.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Bacola, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. I want to also agree with Commissioner Hendrick and the other commissioners about the condition of the property. I specifically note a couple things. One is on exhibit four. I'm noticing that it looks like part of the roof is about to collapse. Was hanging out underneath the entranceway to the upper apartment. So, yes, we will be looking for some commitments on that. Regarding the parking lot, perhaps Mr. Knott, you might have cut out a bit. So are those concrete pillars gonna stay, or are they going, or what's going, can you just go over again what those, the front of that's gonna look like?
The concrete pillars, the concrete pillars are gonna stay.
Okay.
The sidewalk between the pillars and the front of the store will be cleaned up. But it, it's almost impossible to remove those pillars. I mean, you would need, I can't imagine what you would need to get them out of there.
Yeah, I'm not
And they protect the building, anyway.
That was part of it. Okay, I'm gonna reserve any questions until we see what this site's gonna look like afterwards, because I share the same, same questions about the, about the exterior and eventually the parking lot. And last chance, any commissioners have any questions? Hearing run.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I understand you're gonna keep the public hearing open, so you can accept my evidence at the next meeting.
That's correct. I was just gonna go through, I should have done this at the beginning, this is the procedure we're gonna follow for both applications tonight.
Okay.
Let me just read what my notes say. The applicant's presentation will be heard in its entirety today, May twenty-seventh. Commissioners, as we did, we're able to ask questions at the conclusion of the presentation. Any agency or public comment received so far will be entered into the record. At the conclusion of questions, the hearing will be recessed, not closed. Public comment, written or emailed, will be accepted until seven PM on Monday, June eighth, at jhabansky@townofstratford.com. All of our members should plan on attending a June tenth meeting to consider the application, at which time, any public comment received by the deadline will be entered into the record, and the applicant will have the opportunity for any rebuttal or additional information. The public hearing will then be closed, and the commission will proceed as per the statutory calendar. So, Mr. Habanski, is there any public comment we received on this application at this time?
No, we have not.
No, we have not. Jay Habansky here.
Yep. In that case, I will ask for a motion to recess.
Motion to recess, the public forum.
Or to get, actually, Jay, help me out here. Is this to continue this item?
Uh, yeah, you're continuing the public hearing. You're continuing the public hearing.
Okay, so.
Jay Habansky, yes, that's correct.
A motion to continue this until June 10th.
They'll move.
They'll move by Mr. Hendrick. Is there a second?
Second by Mr. Vigliotti.
I heard a second, I wasn't sure who it was from. Please identify yourself.
I'm Jim Vigliotti.
Jim Vigliotti, okay. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Continue at the chairs, the aye has, ayes have it. This item is continuing until June 10th.
All right, thank you very much, folks.
I'll get you what you're looking for. Take care. You can hang up, Bible.
Be in the better connection.
Thank you.
Now we know who the guilty party was now that it's gotten silent.
Yeah. Okay, we're going to proceed to item two, and I know that there's a number of people on the phone, just so that everyone is aware. Um, I'll personally read it. 2009 to 2019 Main Street petition of South, 21 South Avenue LLC seeking special case and site plan review approval to construct a 97 unit housing development and a six unit housing development with additional site improvements in an RS4 slash TOD zone. An erosion and sediment control application has been submitted with this application. Um, as I mentioned, we will be following the same procedure for this particular, uh, item. We will take public, uh, we will take the presentation of the applicant tonight um, and enter in any, uh, correspondence received thus far, as well as any agency comments. Commissioners will have an opportunity to ask questions, and, uh, then public comment will be received in written form only between now and 7:00 PM on June 8th. We'll review that, uh, process again toward the end of the application. So there will not be a, um, uh, verbal participation from the public tonight. Uh, Mr. Bensky, do you want to lead us off with any procedural issues before we start? No? Okay, is the petitioner present?
Can we just, um, I think Jim needs to put on the record about the letter that he received.
Yes, Mr. Vigliotti.
Uh, hi, everybody. Um, on Friday, and I received a mailing, uh, it, uh, referred to the Christ Church vote. And, um, it was kind of a vague statement, uh, that was made, um, that I was being watched and that, um, you know, I should, uh, consider my vote carefully. It didn't really get into specifics about what I was supposed to vote or how I was supposed to vote. Um, but, um, I just wanted to say for the record, if that anonymous person ever decides to come forward and share the contents of that letter, that, um, I'm going to keep an open mind and I'm going to make my judgment or my, uh, decisions based on the merits of the presentation.
Thank you. Um, did anyone else receive a letter? Any of the commissioners receive a letter with regard to the, uh, this application?
No. I, well, I had a couple of phone calls.
So would that please identify yourself?
Uh, this is, uh, Deion Francis.
Yeah, okay.
So, um.
And, um, but. You want to say something?
Were they, were they, uh, phone calls from constituents or?
Yes, from in this district, yes. And, uh, I mean, their main concerns, um, I, I just kind of just jotted some down. Uh, they're worried about the traffic congestion, which I understand because I come home from work. And right now, that whole area, West Broad, Main Street, that whole area is backed up to Stratford High, always towards, uh, Chase Bank sometimes. And, um, so I understood that, that concern, um, they had brought to my attention. Um, they were just saying the quality of life, there was, I guess it was.
And Deion, you can, you can give these, Deion, you can give these during the presentation. I think Attorney Sullivan is just looking to see if anyone received an identical letter.
Oh, okay.
That wouldn't be typical resident feedback, um, that they were expected to receive. Sorry to interrupt, go ahead.
Exactly, no, thank you, Jay. I mean, basically, we just wanted to make sure that, you know, this letter was a letter that, that suggested, um, that somebody should vote a particular way or that, that, um, you know, there should be watching what they're doing. I just wanted to make sure that nobody else had received a letter like that. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Sullivan. Is the petitioner present?
Uh, yes, our team is present.
Okay, please, uh, give us your name and address and you can begin your presentation.
Okay, thank you, uh, thank you, Jay, um, Mr. Chairman and the entire planning commission for your time tonight. We're very excited for being here with you, um, especially during these trying and unprecedented times. Uh, my name is Damian Kalanagi. I am a general partner at our 40-year-old family real estate firm, um, The Kalanagi Company. Today, I have the pleasure of introducing our team and our project, um, The Village. Our TOD or Transit Oriented Development Plan promotes a very sensitive and purpose-driven focus on the following. Classic New England architecture and modern living, walkability to town, local amenities, schools and churches, cycling to the train station and other, other local amenities, uh, connecting our residents and fostering inter, interaction with the local community, and a shift towards green and healthy living, including, um, electric charging stations you'll hear about in a resident organic garden and other community, uh, amenities geared towards a clean living environment. Uh, we fully understand that proposed development gives a neighborhood some pause and potential worry. Who is the team? Will they execute? Are they in it for the short term? Does their project reflect the local architecture and the values? Does it fit in? What is their experience? And what do their other projects look like? Well, we feel the village proposal and our development concept has addressed these concerns in a very sincere way. We hope you all will agree with us. Uh, we have also had privilege to meet with the immediate and the adjacent neighbors um, and show them our plan prior to the submission. There were some great ideas and some thoughtful discussions that came about. Ultimately, we modified certain requests and we incorporated some great suggestions. Unfortunately, due to the coronavirus, we were unable to meet with them again in person. But our plan submitted here shows that we addressed some of their immediate concerns on fencing, additional green buffers, and our proposed dog walk. We find that a successful and honest relationship between the community and the development team is integral to the success of any project that we're involved in. In short, we have spent a considerable amount of time and effort designing, planning, and orchestrating our future TOD project, all within the TOD guidelines and regulations that we feel works very, very well for the site and for the community at whole. We look forward to sharing our project with you tonight. Uh, but before that, I'd just like to give you a little background on our company, uh, The Kalanagi Company. We are the owners of the land, which we, which everyone knows is the Christ Church property, and we plan to be the owners of the future boutique apartment community, as we call it, The Village. We're the developer, the co-architects, along with Beinfield Architects. We plan to own and operate this property for the long term and be part of the Stratford community long term. We have no intentions of selling this project when complete. Our firm was started over 40 years ago from very, very humble beginnings. My father, Alex, who's on this call, an immigrant from Hungary and an architect, started our firm from building one single family home. Then we carefully grew, methodically and slowly, step by step, project by project, determined to make a difference with our clients, our buyers, our residents like, and create a company built on integrity, design excellence, and a strong reputation. We never compromise on our brand nor our communities of which we develop. We have very good relationships and friendships in the towns and the communities which we've worked in and which we presently work in. And we only design and build high-end development. We have built our firm and our brand around that. We have also consistently improved our property values from our sensitive and carefully, uh, executed developments throughout Fairfield County. We started as an architectural firm, then we started building what we designed to ensure the quality and the control were there. Finally, we decided to act as developer on all of our projects. So we are a fully integrated company who handles all aspects of the projects, from the design to the construction to the development, all under one roof. Slowly, we have branched out from single-family homes to gated communities and private enclaves and town home development and multi-million dollar estates and fine homes, and investment and co, co-development in institutional-grade multifamily projects all the way down to the state of Florida. Connecticut is our home, and even in such uncertain times, we believe in Connecticut's future. We are a multi-generational Fairfield County residence, and we have a deep love for Connecticut and a deep love for our projects in Connecticut. We have designed and developed over 100 for-sale projects throughout Connecticut with over $800 million in sales. We have also acted as co-general partners and investment on over $160 million of exceptional multifamily ground-up apartment communities. We're excited about our future here and our future peak community in Stratford, and we're excited to deliver a project that is special in terms of amenities and a unique clean living concept. Tonight, today or tonight, you will learn more about our development plan, our site plan and our architecture, and we look forward to working with Stratford on this exciting project. Let me now introduce our team. We've brought together a great, talented, creative, and proven team. Together, we feel we will execute an exceptional project that Stratford and the community can be very proud of. Joe Mason is our local partner and showed us this property and this land deal. We look forward to working with him on local development. We are working with Beinfield Architecture on co-architecture and co-design for this project that we've called The Village at Stratford. Beinfield has significant experience in designing exceptional award-winning multifamily projects throughout Fairfield County, throughout Connecticut and beyond. Sealan from Beinfield will take you through the project highlights and the overall design concept. Sealan will also explain why, why we feel our new concept design and our architecture is sensitive to local community and neighborhood. Bruce Eckerson Design is an award-winning landscape architectural firm that we've worked with many times on many amazing projects together. Bruce's team will explain our landscape and our site concept for outdoor living, sustainability, lighting, plantings, and green buffer zones. Bruce will explain how our project will help enhance the local community and the neighborhoods in terms of privacy, natural lighting, and additional buffers and green space for the neighbors. Manny Silva is the engineer on the project. Manny has significant experience with local development with all aspects of engineering and surveying. Manny will go over the impacts of the engineering on this project, as well as pointing out the benefits of this new plan for the development and local community in terms of drainage, green space, design, safety, and fire access. Mike Deion is our traffic consultant, and Mike will explain our traffic study which we performed here. So we can go over that. We thank you very much for your time and your consideration. Now, I will now give the floor to Sealan from Beinfield Architecture. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sealan Puffer. I'm a principal at Beinfield Architecture. I apologize for not having a video. This is literally my desktop that's been transplanted into my basement. But if everyone can hear me, I plan on sharing my screen. I think someone will have to give me permission. So I'm going to request to share my screen.
Okay, give me one moment here. The option's just given, just buffering, just give me a moment and bear with me.
Okay. No luck, Jay? No luck, Jay?
Just a moment.
All right, that should do it. Okay, we can say it? All right, perfect. So I'll take you through the architecture. I just want to say for the record, I'm joined by my colleague Heather Wassell, who's also on the line. So development essentially consists of three bull structures. A two-story structure housing six residential units and lining the street. A four-story structure housing 97 units set back from the street and centrally located in the heart of the property. I'll just skip to this next slide to indicate that. This is, this is the, uh, two-story structure, and this is the four-story structure. As you can see, the four-story structure is set back from the road in the middle of the site. And if you've visited the site, you'll know that this is shielded, um, in the center of the site. The, um, is a small single-story structure here that I explained as well. It's just a story shed, um, and, uh, for the gardens that we're providing and a bicycle, bicycle shed. So starting with the four-story structure and the architecture of that. This is a 93,000 square foot, uh, four-story structure housing 97 residential units, approximately 5,500 square foot of residential amenity area and other associated building services such as trash rooms, metal rooms, and refrigeration. There are two, there are two stair towers and two elevators. The architectural style, uh, which we've, uh, presented to the architectural review board, uh, is informed by traditional New England colonial architecture, gable roof lines. Can you see my cursor?
Yes.
Thank you. With, um, gable roof lines, dormers, um, divided light, double-hung windows. The vernacular is simplified with a few embellishments and a preference of clean lines and trim details and a rhythmic, rhythmic order of openings. So you've taken the New England language, New England architectural language, pared it down, uh, but pared it into the details. And this has come in, um, most of the work that comes out of our office. So the, the building looks like it belongs in New England, uh, but it also looks slightly, uh, contemporary and modern at the same time. So the colors will reflect this understated approach. Uh, the decision was made to use, for example, white horizontal fiberglass clapboard siding as predominant material. The gable in the entrance here is differentiated slightly by using a gray vertical siding. And I'm going through this in detail because the architecture that houses this four-story system is, I think, very important. All openings and corners will have traditional trim pieces associated with the clapboard, clapboard siding and New England details. So we will pay attention to the eave detail, to the window details, um, to the porch detail, columns and the edges and the gutters. So we will pay attention to the eave detail, to the window details, to the porch details, columns and the edges and the gutters, and it becomes authentic then. The main roof is architectural asphalt shingle while the porch roofs are standing metal seam. The proposed method of using the HVAC system that will require an exterior condenser unit, so that's why I bring it up. But what we've done with that exterior condenser unit on this four-story building is pocketed into the roof line. So you'll see that. So that attention to detail as well, but just as much as we want to shield it from the public, we want to shield it from our residents as well. So to create a high-quality development. So I'll just take you through the floor plans. Please stop me at any time if there are any questions. So this is the entrance into the site. I'll leave the landing detailing and concepts for Bruce to discuss. But if you arrive at the site for the first time, if you're a potential resident, you clearly see that this is the entrance. Or you'll clearly have that wayfinding of this being entrance. There will be some difference. You can make a turnaround here, back out if you're making deliveries or so, but there'll be, for example, future. And you'll enter this main space into what we call amenity here and so on. But I'll come back to that. A nice concept of this building is that it's permeated in all sides. So if you lived in a ground-floor apartment, a one-bedroom here, you could park your car here and walk into your apartment. It gives you a sense of the ground floor, at least a sense of front door and a sense of being more a traditional residential home. But if you weren't and you were at the upper floors, you'd come in through an amenity. The amenity commonly has programs that's commonly leasing, gym, lounges, cowork and so on. We've been discussing with developer how this environment with COVID and how, we don't know how it'll stick around, but we're discussing how these amenities have to morph based on that. So the programming might change, the way that the program is set out might change, so it provides a secure and safe environment for the residents. Other items on the first floor besides the units, utility, the utility and trash area in this corner. And Manny Silva will go through the truck turn radishes and so on, but the loading, potential loading for a new residence, they can come through these double doors, take their furniture down to these elevators, up. Or trash removal and mechanical water rooms and electrical rooms happen in this corner here. Manny will go through the truck, fire truck access around the back as well. This is a typical floor. If you've ever been in an apartment building, we'd like to think ours are nicer than the most, but it's typical. It's a double-door corridor. Elevators, a mix of one-bedroom studios and two-bedrooms. And just for example, here's a trash room with a trash chute that will take trash down to that trash room that we were discussing, intercompactor is compacted. And then serviced from the double doors you saw in the previous plan. This is just a typical upper floor as well. This is a roof plan. You'll see this concept better in section, but this is the gable roof we're talking about. Again, we wanted to create these roof lines. They're complicated, but we wanted to create them this way because we're trying to scale the building appropriately and create that New England context. This is the pocket for the mechanical systems. As you'll see more clearly in the section when I get to it. So that's the main building. This is the building that lines the street. It's 5,500 square foot, two-story structure. It has the six residential units and associate services and spaces around the central stairwell. So the architectural styling here is in keeping with larger buildings behind it, but it's detailed and scaled to continue the architectural language of the two-story homes facing Main Street. The addition of shutters on the windows, for example, give the sense that this is a single-family home. The structure is the gateway to the development, and it's most visible from the street. So we paid attention to it. We'll invest time and effort in this one, so it looks contextual. The intent is that it looks like it's always been part of the neighborhood. The materials will be the same as the large building, and the exterior condenses for this one will be a piece in the ground towards the back of the structure away from public view. These are the plans for that structure. Again, simple two-story. The resident for this front unit will be able to walk up that front porch right down the middle, like that. These two residents will either come around the back, oh, in here. And then if you wanted to get to the upper floors, sorry, upper floors, this is one, you'd walk up the stairs and you have access to the three units above. And finally, in terms of the build structures. With Damian and his team, Damian Alex and their team, we were always conscious of how to create a community and what a community needs. So TOD being the largest part of it, but the idea that you're close to public transport. And to go with that, we have a large bike shed. Most of it was a bike shed, so people could bike to the train station potentially, and then a community got back here. So they can grow their own fruits and vegetables, and we found that's becoming more and more popular. This is a view of what that structure would look like. So again, we don't want to, everything, all of these three structures look the same. It looks similar, and it's a cohesive architectural plan. There's storage and then the bike storage. I'm not sure if you're interested in this. We showed this architectural review, but it goes to the quality of the materials and the types of materials we want to use. These two houses are houses that our office has done. This may, I don't know if it looks like a house to you, but the idea was for it to look like a residential entry. But it's actually a 200, over 200-unit project in New Haven. We're up in a residential street. But we were able to create these porches that scale down and match the homes across, the three-story homes across the street. This is similar to the porches we will have along the base base of our project here. And then, yeah, and then the materials, the siding, the windows, the roof. Those are the cupola. These are the concepts, architectural concepts that the building will try to mimic. And I'll just finish on this to show you, but the roof, only purpose of this roof is for architectural identity. It doesn't, there's no program in it, and it's like architecting the mechanical unit into it, so you don't see it. So we know 97 residential units will have 97 condensers and they're hidden. That's all I have. I have all the drawings that you have with me if you want to go through any of them, but that's essentially the architecture.
Should we, Jay, this is Damian. Should we just go through everybody on the team and then have a Q and A after, or how would you like to, what's the best way?
Yeah, I would say unless one of the commissioners has a que, this is Jay Hibansky, I'm sorry. Unless one of the commissioners has a question, they will, they'll jump in. Otherwise, I would say just keep working through your team.
Agreed. So I'll bring up Bruce Eckerson. And then Bruce, just point me, if I'm not pointing the right thing, just let me know.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Bruce Eckerson, the principal of Eckerson Design Associates Landscape Architects. We're proud to be part of this team and presenting this wonderful project tonight. Our goal with the site plan was to develop a landscape that is sensitive to the site, will effectively screen the property, provide common tenant amenities, utilize its native plants where possible, and enhances the beautiful building that Beinfield designed and the neighborhood at large. As you can see from the site plan here, we have a continuous green space around the entire property. Within that green space, we're going to have a six-foot-high solid PVC or composite solid board fencing along the north, west and east property lines, along the southern property line where the more commercial adjacent uses are, we will have a six-foot-high Jarrett aluminum picket fence. And the reason we're changing the fence style there is that's the southern exposure and our screening trees that line the fire lane will benefit from more light than they would get from a solid, solid privacy fence. Within that green space around the property, we have approximately 260 evergreen trees per screen. Species will include a variety of arborvitae, green giants, almost green, American, dark Americans. And so the intention here is to provide a complete screened perimeter of the property. Within the parking lot, we have a planted raised island for every 12 spaces. So that results in 23 shade trees, which would include maples, oaks, honey locusts, those types of hardwood canopy type of trees. The plantings and the raised beds under the trees will be a combination of native shrubs and grasses and perennials, hopefully with some ability to provide homes and attractions for only birds and butterflies. We are going to be planting around the entire perimeter of the building, again, using native shrubs where possible. Those varieties would include clefira, itea, holly, laurel, et cetera. As Sealan had mentioned, we have the one main road coming in from Main Avenue that comes into a parking lot behind Building B, and then kind of three distinct parking areas around Building A. Along the perimeter of Building A, there is a series or a network of sidewalks that connect the building all the way out to Main Avenue. And as Sealan had mentioned, there is a sidewalk from Building B directly from the front door out to the existing sidewalk on Main Avenue as well. There is an entry sign along the entry drive there, just adjacent to Building B. It has not been designed yet, but it will be designed within the guidelines of the TOD district. So not bigger than 48 square feet and will be lit externally. Other amenities that we're providing, Sealan had alluded to. We have a garden, a community garden with a storage area for tools and potting supplies up in that northwestern corner. We have two electric vehicle charging stations. We have bike racks on either side of the building. You can see one there on the right and one on the left of Building A, just around the corner from the front. We have a dog run in the bottom right corner or the southeastern corner of the property. And during our meeting with the adjacent neighbors, the dog run was relocated to this location to get the potential for noise and other issues that resolve around dog runs away from where it was located, which was the community garden. As you arrive at the front door of the building, we have two double parking spaces. They're more for tenant, prospective tenant parking, Uber rides, food delivery areas. And those spaces will be defined by permeable pavers. We also have a large kind of interior courtyard behind Building A that will be, that will consist of a central artificial turf lawn area, seating areas in both gravel and hard-surfaced areas, hard surface again being permeable pavers. We'll have some shade structures, some shade trees. We see this as an area that the tenants can hopefully, one day after the COVID issue has gone, congregate, create a more of a sense of community. Then the last part of the presentation on my end is the lighting plan, which is the next sheet. So we have two types of lighting for the project. We have parking lot lighting, which is on a 10-foot pole. It's an LED fixture with a hooded cutoff. And we have two-foot-high bollard or pathlight. So the bollard lighting is really adjacent to the Building A sidewalk and also the Building B sidewalk along the entry road. And the poles are along both sides of the east and western parking areas and on the northern side of the north parking area along the front of the building. So, and we also have some path lighting and bollard lighting within the interior courtyard as well. So that's the landscape plan presentation. So hand it over to our engineer. Is he with us?
Yes, I'm here. Good evening. This is Manny Silva from Roast Tiso and Company. I'll need the screen controls from Jay, but in the meantime, I'd like to say that you've seen me on various projects in Stratford, including TODs. And one thing I just wanted to say is that working with this developer, I'm kind of impressed on the amount of detail and the and the quality of work that the building that they want to bring to the town of Stratford. We've done some other TODs, but this one definitely, I think, should be, it is a very good project for the transit district in Stratford and should probably, here we go, let's see, that's my word. Should probably be considered like a trademark or an example of what TOD development should be in this zone. So I'm going to go over quickly the history of the project. Right now, this is the existing site plan. The site is here on Main Street, and as you can see, it comes up, Main Street, and the train station is in this area. So it's a very walkable area, very connected to 95 and the train station and to areas in the downtown, the town, town here. The history of the project basically was, there's an approval in place right now to have a townhouse units along the perimeter of the project like this with the parking with inside, inside of that. So that this owner felt that this, this is, these units way too close to the residential units. So this northern area and to the west is a single-family residential, while you have your commercial district here to the south. So what we, so what the developer would like to do is to pull the, the intent was to pull away those units from the residence areas and landscape them with a perimeter landscaping, and then at these islands, this parking, and then bring the units actually away closer to the commercial district and then have their amenity spaces or outdoor spaces enclosed within the courtyard of the building and facing towards the commercial, your CA zone, towards the commercial uses. What you have here, as you will come in, as was mentioned by Sealan, you have your entrance off of Main Street, which has good connectivity with you have your entrance off of Main Street, which has good connectivity with, with the Main Street traffic, obviously, as was mentioned. So cars coming and out. Now, the TOD zone is a zone that is designed to have higher density because traffic, there's less cars in this area that would be coming in and out as residents would tend to use mass transit versus personal cars. That's why we have a good ample allotment of bike racks, bike storage, and sidewalks to connect bikers and pedestrians to the mass transit in the area. To leave the site currently, we'll have to cut back the bullnose in the center island. We've already talked to DOT about this because this is a state road. To cut back this nose 10 feet so that we can have vehicle access with fire trucks and delivery vehicles. So this here is a delivery vehicle turning template, and this is the largest fire truck in Stratford. The circulation comes in through Main Street. You can turn left or right into these parking areas for the Building A or behind Building B. Here is your garden, your community garden, some bike with the storage for, for them. And there's the bike storage. If you were to ride your bike, you'd come in on the sidewalk, put your bike in here and go off into the building or at the two bike racks here and here. Now, in conversation with your fire marshal, which he has approved this plan, he's gone over, we've gone over it with him. He requested that we have a circulation around the building. So what we did was we created this area behind the building that's actually going to look like a lawn, but it's a reinforced lawn with these grass road pavers, which will be able to hold the weight of the fire truck. He's already reviewed this. What we'll have is basically a pushgate here or a chain here and here so that only access to the emergency vehicles can come back here. What we also, the reason why the gate is further back here on this side is because we take advantage of having the trash room and the moving, the move-in area here so that people can pull in, drop off furniture or come pick up, or the garbage man can come pick up the garbage from the trash room back up into this hatched area and then leave this way. The fire marshal also requested that we have a three-point turnaround in this corner here because we originally had this just doing a right angle here. But the fire marshal would, would like to be able to bring the fire truck here, back out, and then leave that way without having to go all the way around. Here's that recreational area detailed by the landscape architecture. The, the, the site meets all your TOD requirements. The, the site has 116 spaces, which is well, which is above the required 109. Again, we believe that the, the parking usage on the site will be much less because it's a more of a mass transit oriented district or transit-oriented district, as you, as the town of Stratford calls it. Again, so he, this is basically the site plan as, as detailed. I'll go on to the fun stuff everybody likes to hear about the drainage and engineering. So the site is relatively flat. The current site kind of slopes to the center and a bowl kind of thing here. Is originally was a parking lot for the church across the street. So what we are doing, we are actually going to put the building a little bit higher on a platform. Maybe you're just raising the grade slightly so that it's not in, in a hole. And the drainage will be picked up in a, in a, in a fashion from some catch basins here. So currently, there's no catch, there is no storm drainage control on site. All the pavement goes to, to some various catch basins and then straight out into Main Street uncontrolled. So what we have is a series of catch basins with the snout hoods in each one. And then that goes into a underground storage system, which is about 1,480, 1,480 lineal feet of four-by-two galleries. There's a control structure here at the end, which will meter the flow coming out of the project. And so I'm just going to talk about some numbers really quick just for the record. So the, the actual existing flow out of the site right now is, is almost four CFS at the two-year storm, eight CFS at the 10-year storm, and nine point eight, 25-year storm. So to meet the MS4 requirements, we have to take all the drainage offline. And right now, it is connected online. And due to the way the site has no real controls on site, the controls that we have would actually result in a zero discharge at two-year storm, a zero discharge at the 10-year storm and a 0.2 at the 25. What that means is that basically we're retaining nearly 100% of all the stormwater on our site. And that complies to the MS4 requirements for the town of Stratford, the, the stormwater quality requirements for the Connecticut State DEP. And therefore, we will reduce the amount of volume. We'll increase the water quality of the stormwater on site and will greatly reduce the amount of volume that's being discharged into the state, into the town and state systems. So as you can see, all the utilities come on and off of, off of Main Street. There's a gas line coming in. We have units providing gas to them. The water sanitary sewer will be connected to the existing sanitary sewer in Main Street. Water, obviously, all our roof leaders are connected directly into the underground system so that there is no drainage even in the courtyard that, that is not, that is not part, that is not being detained or being controlled by our stormwater system. Everything goes in there and will be held here on the whole, the entire volume. During construction, because we don't want to have any soil erosion control or, I mean, I don't want to have any soil erosion or dirt out onto the neighboring properties or onto Main Street, we propose a silt fence envelope around the whole property, as you can see here. And a silt fence basically stops any rainwater during excavation to carry any sediment to neighboring properties. It's basically a filter. It'll filter the water out before it goes onto neighboring properties and not discharge any sediment off, off site. We have silt sacks on every catch basin. So the first thing we do is we put in the storm drainage system and we can start using the storm drainage system even though it isn't paved. And what, once that water goes into the catch basins, you want to be able to have that silt sack in there to catch any sediment so that water gets through, but all that sediment and any kind of debris that's in the construction site doesn't get into the system and compromise the system. So that when we do have a stabilized site that's all paved, we pull these silt sacks and the, the system is ready to go clean with no, with no sediment or any kind of contaminants inside of the actual system. What we also have is an anti-tracking pad at the entrance. And that's basically a big stone pad so that vehicles don't track mud onto Main Street. That basically knocks all the material off of the wheels and then they shouldn't track any, any soil out onto Main Street, and that's the purpose of that. And that's basically it. That's a detail of it there. The next is just some detail sheets, basically how we, we want to accomplish. Here's that silt sack detail. It's basically a piece of silt fence with a rod on the perimeter to, sorry about that, to collect water from the top here and then filters that sediment through and water, clean water goes into the system and out. And that's only dirt. And once the site's stabilized, we pull those out and the, the system is ready to go with clean, like it was brand new. Here's just basically our standard details for the sidewalks. They're going to be concrete sidewalks, integral curves with a wire and our dumpster pads, which will have, well, we don't have dumpster pads, but our concrete, concrete pads that will have some rebar. And this is our standard detail for, for the DOT driveway. So I, I think that basically sums up what I have here for the site plans. And I'll be willing to answer any questions at the end. But again, I feel like this, this project really fits into TOD zone. And as, as for like the elevations, as you saw, it's probably some of the nicest elevations I've seen proposed on a TOD in the town of Stratford. And right now, I'll turn it over to your traffic engineer. Mike, hopefully you can, do you want the screen, Mike, or do you want?
Yes, Manny, that, that would be great, Manny.
All right, thank you.
For the record, my name is Mike Dionne. I am a principal at BL Companies. I lead the traffic unit there. And if, when I get the screen, I'll let, we'll just talk about the project traffic a little bit. We understand the project is at 2009, 2019 Main Street. It's going to be 97 housing unit development with an additional six units of housing on site. It is not letting me share screen.
Okay, I wasn't sure. This is Jay Habansky. I'm going to give you presenter status, okay, Michael?
Oh, perfect.
Give me one moment. Sure, give me one sec.
So we know it's going to be 99,000, approximately 99,000 square feet of total square feet of usage. Let's see. Is my screen there? Yes. So for the traffic, what we did is we took out, we went out and did a lot of data collection for this job. We, well, not a lot. We did a traffic counts at two intersections, one north of the site and one south of the site. And we looked at the AM and PM peak hours because that's typically for a residential complex when the traffic is going to be heaviest. We went out and did a field inventory where we took some photographs of the intersections and we verified the roadway geometry and lane arrangements out there so make sure that they match what we gathered from the DOT traffic signal plans. And then we also have historical data out there for the 24-hour traffic counts. And we actually worked with another firm doing a TOD study for the train station down there. So we had some information from that that we can compare to. What we did with that data is we looked at them, make sure that the volumes make sense. We take them and we project them out to the build here, which we're assuming was 2021. So we grew the traffic out from our projected, our traffic count. We grew it out at 1% per year, which was a factor we got from the Connecticut DOT for traffic in the area. And then we looked at getting any proposed developments in the area from the DOT. And there weren't any, but, so that became our background traffic, so our 2021 background data. And next, what we would do is we would take the actual units that are being put in and we would go to the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual and get trip generation data for that size unit, that development. IT Trip Generation Manual is the, the standard for this generation of trips. It's been utilized for 50-plus years now. And what we've figured out with our 104 units total is that in the AM peak hour, we'd be generating 38 trips. And in the PM peak hour, we'd be generating 46 trips. So what that means is in the AM peak hour, seven to nine, in the highest one-hour period of that time, whether it be set 15, 8:15, we're going to have 38 trips total coming in and out of the site. And what we do with that data is we put it into a traffic program called Syncro, where it analyzes the total delay at an intersection. And what that gives us is a level of service for the intersections. And this is a letter grade that it assigns to them. And it's just like you're in school, letter grades A through F, A being the best, F being failing. And according to the Department of Transportation, anything above a D is acceptable. And what we found out with these intersections is that they're all operating at acceptable levels of service. And this up on the screen is the AM. And you can see, I like to put the delay up there. And you can see that there was no change to the delay at the intersections with this added traffic in the AM or in the PM. We get a high of a 0.3, 0.3 second delay added to the intersection at Broad Street. So you can see that this is not going to have a significant impact on the intersection, intersections. It just doesn't generate enough traffic to impact the signals. So according to our report and dealings with DOT, we would say that there's not going to be a significant impact to traffic with this site being installed. We do like what the design engineer proposed of modifying the median along Route 113 to allow for the left-turning traffic out and the right-turning traffic and left-turning traffic into the site. This will require an encroachment permit from DOT. And as Manny said, they've already started that process of talking to the DOT. So they're aware of it and understand that it's coming in. And we would just suggest that they provide the appropriate stop line and stop signs at the site driveway, which our engineers has provided. So with that, I'll open to any questions if you have any or I'll turn it back over to our team so they can and answer any questions.
This is Mike Henrich. I did have a quick question for you. On the traffic study, did, did, did your traffic study take into account? I know you said it's a minimal reduction. Did your traffic study take into account exit 33? I think that's going to alleviate a lot of the traffic that's there now. I don't know. I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure once that, that entrance ramp goes into place, it's going to reduce the traffic on Main Street significantly.
Yeah, we did, we did not include that because we wanted to show a worst-case scenario of what's going on out there now. So that is why we used the existing configurations out there.
But the, but I would think that the, the traffic on Main Street is going to be significantly reduced once exit 33 is put in place and, and.
That definitely is the hope of the department. So I know that that's, that's a plan that they have and hopefully it gets completed. And it will have an impact on our Main Street and it'll make traffic even better.
Okay, thanks.
Jim Vigliotti. I, I was looking at your, the traffic study. I didn't notice any dates. So when, when, when did you gather your data?
We gathered our data back in February, so it was before any COVID impact. We were lucky that we started this soon enough.
Yeah, that was my thought. I mean, I haven't left, yeah, I haven't moved to work since March, you know, mid-March, so.
Yeah, no, that, that was always a concern with all our projects. So we were lucky that we got in before that.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding traffic? I, I do have, I just want to ask a question while we break here. I just find those numbers a little low. So just make sure I understand exactly how, how we're calculating this. If there's 100-some units there, how do we get to 38? Is that assuming that like upwards of 70% of the people are not taking a car off the property in the morning? Am I interpreting that correctly?
Nope, that is not what it is. What it is, is we look at the, the heaviest, the peak hour. So that's the one hour, like as I said, in AM peak. Typically, what we look at is a two-hour period, 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, which is your heaviest commuting period time. And what you look at when you're analyzing traffic is the heaviest one-hour period. So when that happens is like, so that's just saying that 38 vehicles is the heaviest of that one hour out of the two-hour period. So that, that just means that in the other hour of that peak period, you could have another 30 cars coming and going. But the traffic on the roadway itself would be less, so it would make up the difference.
Okay. I'll hold, I got a few other questions for later, but we'll take it there unless anybody other has any questions to the traffic engineer. Okay. Send it back to the applicant.
Damien, I think that's the end of our presentation. We can take questions?
Yes, yes, please.
Okay, let's go through the members. Mr. Vigliotti, you're up first. Any questions regarding anything that's been proposed?
You mentioned during the discussion of the history of the, of the project that the original plan was to have townhouses that were constructed. And, and your thought was to bring the, the townhouses together to create this structure. Townhouses to me are like maybe two stories. So would you say that not only did you change the location, but you've also increased the, the size of the structure as well in terms of the number of stories of this new project?
Uh, Damian, do you want me to address that or?
Um, well, I was gonna let Manny address the original, but I believe it was three stories on the, on the less, but Manny, would you, would you uh, go with that? And then Sealan can go from there, please?
So the original, the original, the proposal was a three story townhouse with a, you know, basically with a uh, type of ground floor garage type area and then uh, first the main area and then the, the bedrooms on the third floor. Um, so what it was is that, you know, those, those were just very long mass buildings along uh, basically the residential neighbors. And to try to consolidate that into one area, basically conserve the space and just use it for residential in one area near the commercial, we used that U-shaped building. Um, now I'll let Seal and talk about how, how they came up with uh, you know, basically. I think what happened is is that because of the, the quality of construction they're, they're shooting for, um, they increased the unit count and then repeated, needed another uh, story to basically consolidate into that smaller space. Um, but I, you know, the existing or the thing that we got approved prior, um, I was the engineer on that project also, um, was a three story townhouse um, going around the perimeter.
Uh, Manny, let me just also add that the um, there was an access issue that we also had on that. Uh, you remember getting in with the fire trucks and getting in with the emergency vehicles. We were very worried about that original access, not to mention that it was right on the property line for all, so that you'd be, your backyard, would you do the backyard neighbors, which would give zero privacy in our opinion, you know, as architects and developers?
So, uh, and I'll just add to that, uh, Damian. Damian, as you know, to be honest, when we, you came to us with this project, you asked what we could do on the site and uh, we looked at it as a fresh project. We didn't look back at the previous scheme. Damian showed that to us afterwards, after a while. We thought to ourselves, what is the best use and layout for the sites and basic premise was continue, continue the um, the residential feel on the street and centralize an apartment building in the middle that buffed you away from the neighbors and gave you a little enclave of a residential community. Uh, that essentially was the thought process for the design. Um, Damian and his team came to us because we do apartment buildings. Um, and we, we know that taking that shape, that U shape and having a courtyard in the mo- in the middle is one of the best ways to create a community because it's set, uh, the, the residential uses uh, uh, circle So that's how we came up with the layout.
Thank you.
The point, biggest one is not a factor in our design.
That's all I have for now. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Francis.
Uh, yeah, uh, how you doing, Dion Francis? Uh, my question is now there is a, a height si- situation here. We're generally allotted, what, forty five feet, correct? And this, the structure with the gable roof is going to be fifty. Correct me if I'm wrong, well, that's correct, right?
That is correct.
All right, so what, I just wanna know what made us go from the forty four original everybody agreed with to now the hundred and some odd with the actually uh, the, you know, over the height of what is allotted for the town, which pretty much would tower over any other structure.
So I can speak specifically to, specifically to the height issue that we uh, that we approached with the ARB. Uh, if you let me show my screen again, Jay, I can bring up the diagram that indicates that.
Sure, sure. This is Jay. Give me one moment.
Uh, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so it is within the regulations, but up to your discretion to grant any height above uh, forty five feet. This is, uh, we met, we met with uh, Jay and his team and explained what we wanted to do and he asked us to prepare a few diagrams to describe what we were trying to do. These are them. This section shows the, it should say forty five feet, so I'm sorry, it says forty five two, but forty five foot, a line of where forty five foot would be. Um, and this is the height of to the midpoint of the roof of the structure we're proposing at fifty one and a half. The intent of this is to, to show that we are getting no value from um, this additional height that we're requesting other than architecture, the look of the building. We could produce this building at forty five feet and get the same density. All we wanted to do, this is a flat roof, all we wanted to do is have the ability to do bolted gable ends. Uh, sorry, that's the wrong one. I shouldn't choose water because that, that suggests that the inside of the units are vaulted. They're not. But gable end structures so that it um, it, it mimics Connecticut, uh, New York, that we've been talking about. So as we, we, in the four stories of the flat roof structure, where um, this, this shows that four stories, same density, uh, forty five feet, the top of the flat roof. But we want this look as opposed to this look. So that's specifically the height issue. And the height um, request from forty five to thirty, fifty, it put one and a half inches.
Okay, and I mean, listen, and it does look better. I mean, I, I ca- I can't disagree with you. It definitely looks better than the flat roof. The only thing my concern, concern is now we're setting a precedent. And they're all going to, you know, anybody else in the future.
Manny Silva, just to kind of talk about the actual, how the regulation is written. Um, in seven point ten point seven K, um, the, it allows the, it basically gives the commission. And this is not a precedent, it's in writing. Uh, you know, the, the request for zoning commission to allow up to sixty feet in height in a TOD district. So sixty feet is allowed in TOD district. Just from forty five to sixty, it, it just specifically, we need to have uh, we need to ask you specifically for that height. It's not a waiver, it's, it's within the regulation. Um, and the reasoning for it is because they want to have, you know, a better looking colonial type of architecture versus what you see on, what you have like on Ferry, uh, Ferry Boulevard. Um, which is another TOD project that was approved. Um, and I think that's what I was trying to speak to in the beginning is that this is, this developer is a little bit different than some of the ones that have developed on other TOD sites. And that they really, they're, they're really sticking their neck out to try to get a quality product. Something that fits in with the neighborhood with, you know, basically they didn't have to provide, you know, farmhouse porches in the front or gable roofs. It's cheaper for them to actually make a flat roof, flat roof building and not have to ask this commission for the additional height. But it's not a precedent and you wouldn't be setting a precedent. It's in your regulation. You're allowed to give up to sixty feet. Um, and that's what the, that's basically written in there because that's what the intent of the TOD was.
And this is Jay Hibansky, uh, just for the uh, commission's reference, uh, what, what Manny Silva just stated is correct. It would not set precedent necessarily, and it's within the zoning commission's discretion as to whether or not they would like to uh, grant uh, up to sixty feet.
I have a couple more.
Proceed, sir.
Do you have some questions, Mr. Francis? Oh, um, now, um, what about the sewer system? Will that be able to handle um, all the newly hundred and, was it hundred and nine? Hundred fifteen with the six, the other one?
Yes, this is Manny Silva again. So we spoke with um, the town engineer and this has been in front of him, Mr. Casey. Um, we have no issue with capacity at, for the sewer commission. I, I mean, obviously for the sewer and we will be going to WPC to get their approval also. Um, but he has no concerns for sewer capacity issues. Um, the reason why we uh, stored a hundred percent of the stormwater is because there is a concern from Mr. Casey and uh, the DOT in fact, that the pipes down um, by Stratford Avenue and Main Street uh, have a capacity issue. So therefore, we're holding all of our stormwater on site and we're not discharging any to that system. So there's no issue with the sanitary sewer because we have more than enough capacity for that, but the stormwater is, is why we're holding a hundred percent on our side.
And we, we have documentation saying that, that, that system, I know that system's old. I mean, this is only, oh. I mean, for to, you know, and, and that's a residential area. So I just was, that was just one of my concerns. If we have any information on that.
Um, so the, the Mr. Casey reviewed the project and he has, I believe, some correspondence. If not, I, I, I just can't remember. It's been a couple of months. I'm sorry. But um, he, I know that I had personal conversations with him and then I think he, he did review this for, as part of uh, the process prior to coming to this public hearing. And so you're correct, Strat, Main Street is a very old road, but it also has a very large uh, pipe in there that used to be a combined line, since they separated. So it used to have to handle sanitary flow and stormwater. So now they, it's since then, it's been separated. So that larger pipe is just taking, is just taking sanitary flow now, which is much less. Um, and the only concern they had was the older stormwater outfall pipe that goes down Stratford Avenue. And that's why the stormwater, the water rains onto the site is being collected a hundred percent on site, but there we, there was no concerns for the actual sanitary usage.
Good. All right, that's all I got. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Vacola, any questions?
Yeah, this might be for Jay. Uh, Jay, in the past during these projects, we had input from the Stratford Police Department on, you know, traffic studies. Um, was anything done by them for this?
Yes, this is Jay Hibansky. Uh, no, we didn't get any comments from uh, from the police department. Although the referral was sent out to them uh, on March, on Tuesday, March third, twenty twenty.
Okay, and the other question I have is a fire issue. Um, the fire hydrants in that location. Um, how close are they to the building? Is there gonna be anything on the property for the fire department to hook up in the past projects like that had run in? Uh, separate fire hydrants for them to use?
Uh, Manny Silva again. Um, the, the, this project was uh, was reviewed by the fire marshal and he requested for two fire hydrants, one on the, each front corner. Um, and uh, basically he requested that and then the, the two turnarounds that I, the three point turnaround and the access around the building. And we completed that. We sent that back to him and he was in agreement that uh, he was satisfied with the uh, the site plan.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Henrik.
Um, and if it, so on your, on your artist rendering, um, it shows brick chimneys or what looks like to be brick chimneys. Are, are those there for aesthetics or are they uh, in some way functional?
They're, they're, this is Seal and Papa. They're, they're for aesthetic. Uh, in the pop, managed to get a few flues, like bottom exhaust flues up there. If, if they're located properly, but they're mostly there for aesthetic. Um, they'll be clad with thin bricks, so structurally it works.
And, and will the cupola, will that, will that be a glass enclosure? Or will that be an open? Um, open cupola?
Again, that's the aesthetic. There's a unit below it.
Yeah, but it's, so it'll be sealed? I mean, I'm just curious what it's gonna, okay.
It'll be sealed. Uh, RB commissioners asked if there's a light. There is not lighting it. Um, it's for the proportioning of the building.
Sure, okay. And then you show, you show crown moldings uh, above all the windows. Is that, is, is that your intent?
Yes, the intent is to have a window head from, we haven't chosen yet, the window head from above everywhere.
Okay, and the um, the side, the side porches, the, the elevated decks, are they, what, what kind of finishes are you gonna have on those?
So the actual deck itself um, could be uh, could be a composite board, composite deck material. Um, the, the older posts would be structural posts, wood posts clad in like a AZAC, painted AZAC type material.
Okay. So, so it'll be uh, so it'll be a more of a wood look than a metal look?
The, the roof is metal. We can ma- we made the choice to make the, we didn't want the asphalt shingles uh, that low in the sideline.
Yeah, no, not the metal, but the, the side decks, the railings?
Other railings. Railings will be a little, paint aluminum or, or powder coated aluminum.
Will be what? I'm sorry.
A painted or powder coated aluminum. I'll give you, I'll show it to you. Uh, I'm still sharing my screen. So. And the intent is to use that exact same sort of finacure.
Well, okay, those look great. Um, and I know, so when when Keating Ford, the property down the road came in, um, they had, I won't say similar finishes, but they had, they had nicer finishes like yours. Um, I think that building, I think you've gone above and beyond what they've done with, with your aesthetics and your finishes. Um, you know, at the time, there was some concern that, that it would get rundown and, and, you know, lower rents, but I, based on, on your finishes and the materials and the, the quality of the work you're doing, I, I'm thinking that these, the rents are, are gonna be more on the higher ends, more uh, you know, more for uh, like commuter, commuter type uh, executives, I guess? Is that, is that where you're, where you're thinking? I mean?
Damian, you'd have to take that.
Damian, um, I, 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 I think we're probably gonna be right in line with the other project, uh, you know, is what we're underwriting towards.
Okay. I mean, you've, you've done a great job with the aesthetics of the building and, and I think that the, the character is gonna draw in a higher clientele anyway. Um, in the, in the front, you have two spaces for electrical, electric vehicles. Um, I, I don't know what the ratios are. Would it make sense to put more charging stations in there? Or, or do you feel that the two, the two stations, I mean, environmental issues are a big thing? Um, do you feel that the, the two charging stations are sufficient to meet the needs of, you know, the hundred units or would, would it make sense maybe to um, to make a few more charging stations in there?
You know, a- a- as of, this is Damian again. As of right now, we chose to, uh, you know, just talking about that internally. Could that switch to three or four? Yeah, possibly, you know, again, uh, you know, there's also an economic factor that goes along with that, so. What, what, we, we, thank. It's a good question.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not a request, it's just a question. I, it just, um, it seemed like in today's, today's world, you see more and more Teslas and, and uh, you know, being, be, reducing the environmental impact uh, might help, you know, but um, so I guess, I know there's a question about the roof height. So you, you did say though that you could build this and stay with under that, but it's, it would be a flat roof, which the aesthetics would be less appealing if you, if you went that route?
Yeah, that is, sorry, go ahead, Sealan.
So I was just on to direct. The answer is yes, we could build this uh, same density. Or slightly under.
Yeah, and, and just to further that, I mean, one of our, our vision here was really to try to create something that is, you know, a village concept, the New England village concept. That's what a lot of our background is in. And we felt that, you know, and especially even, even speaking with uh, Jay earlier, that, you know, this was something that we uh, uh, wonderful project for Stratford.
Yeah, no, I, I agree.
Like to keep that architectural integrity if we could.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's a beautiful look of building, so um, and you know, my stepson lives down in Merle's inlet and, and apartment buildings are, are really popular there and he lives in the they haven't gone to the extent you have with the aesthetics, but it really is a, you know, it, it really is kind of a village concept. They're a bunch of, bunch of younger people, uh, They live there, they have their dogs, they do their walks, they they do all those things within that community. And it really is a community and I think this would be a a great asset to Stratford. I think you've done, you've you've done a great job with the lighting, the landscaping, you know, you're obviously spending a fortune on the landscaping. Try and buffer it, create a create a more aesthetically pleasing environment as well. So I think that's it. So one last question, so the transit oriented district regulations, as you're proposing this, even with the Gable roof, you you fall completely within those regulations. You're not, you're not asking for anything special. You you came to our town, you read the regulations and you complied with all of them?
This is Damian, I'll answer that. We are not requesting any variances and we're doing everything as of right in your TOD district and for those regulations. Also confirm that, but that and and Sealan, but that's exactly what we've been working with. Did not want any kind of variance.
Manny Silva, again, Damian is correct. The we we are conscious of trying to keep everything within, well within the TOD district. Even even the height is within the TOD district, it's just a special request to the commission. But it's it's all within the within by right, it's I would, it's it's within the TOD district and what it allows.
It's within the regulations that that our town created?
Correct.
Okay, just one last thing. So one of the things with the transit oriented district is to entice people to get involved with the with public transportation, less cars. I think you have quite a few bike spaces. What's the total number of bike spaces you have on the property? I I think even the shed, you have some bike storage in there as well.
Yeah, the the bike storage, we don't know the exact count, but we're planning on getting a lot of hanging bikes in there. So uh, uh, Sealan, would you be able to answer that?
Just based, just based on experience, you could get about 40 bikes in here. With a with a high density hang system. But like, again, and I think like any of these projects, including the the question about the electric vehicle charging, demand would dictate how you how you change the the storage, for example. If you give more space to bike storage, more people want it.
Okay, and and it's it's what, half a mile, you said, from the from the train station?
Manny, what is the exact distance?
Hold on, I'll get a, I'll get you, I'll get you on the distance here in a minute.
But we really want it to be walkable and bicycle friendly. I mean, that is really the idea.
Right.
And 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 you're exactly right with what you were saying earlier, you know, to to foster that kind of community and that culture that's gonna be surrounded, the village concept, that's that's our ultimate goal here. To provide something that's unique and a boutique driven project and product that, you know, would further enhance the town.
Yeah, I I do appreciate how you laid that out with the courtyard in the middle facing the commercial property. So even if people were out in the courtyard, the the noise and and any distraction it might cause would be projected towards the commercial side of the property, not the residential side. So, you know, really, to me, shows a concern for the neighborhood and and the residents, you know, and I do appreciate that.
Thanks, thank you, Bernard. Manny Silva, I just confirmed the distance to the train station is 0.45 miles.
So that's like, what, a five, 10-minute walk?
Uh, yeah, yeah, less, I would, I can estimate that.
Yeah, so so somebody leaving here would take them, so, I mean, not only are we reducing traffic, but but it would reduce some of the need for parking at the train station since these people have a night. And that was one of the concerns about all the other projects was was distances, is it too far? Will people really walk? But I think this is in 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 a very reasonable distance and a number, you know, whoever lived there, if they're going on the train, it's 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 an enhancement for them and a draw to to move into a a project so close. And in the end, it actually would reduce the need for parking down at at the train station. All right, I'll 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 yield the floor and I guess we'll have an opportunity to ask some more questions at a later time.
Yeah, I just got a quick question. Now, um, are we making assumptions or are you dictating who resides there? Like, are you only renting to communicate? Are we making assumptions that all community?
No, there is no, there is no restrictions, no.
So we're assuming because it's closer to the train station, you have more.
I I I think you're correct, absolutely.
Okay, that's.
Okay, thank you, Sam.
Now, are you doing like 30% of low income, you're doing, or you're just doing a fair market rate?
Uh, this is mar- market rate.
Thanks for answering that for me.
So this is not an affordable, this is not an affordable housing project?
Uh, no, no, it is not. This is a market rate project.
If it was affordable housing, you probably put a whole lot more units in there, couldn't you?
Uh, yeah, we would have to, that, yes, you're correct.
But you've chose not to.
Uh, yes, we we chose not to.
Okay, I got a a few other questions I'd like to ask. Okay, first of all, I didn't quite catch the number of guest parking spaces. Could you just go through what your calculations on that are?
Danny, do you want to take that or is that Sealan?
I mean, this is Manny Silva, I could take that. So it's really how guest parking spaces is depends on how we actually divide up units and how many spaces they get per unit. I think that's really gonna be something that's specific to how the developer wants to operate it. So what we have, if you were gonna say, oh, well, you're required 109 and we're providing 116, so the balance would be guest spaces. But I think that's kind of incorrect because if you provide, you know, one per unit, which is what we have here, basically, how we came up with the, what we needed was one bedroom units needed 79 spaces. And then the two bedroom units needed a one and a quarter. But as we know in practice, you really don't need that many with a a a development this close. So I, we, at least in my opinion, in my professional opinion, there's approximately 25 to 26 visitor spaces. But again, that's how it's really up to the developer and how he will divvy up the spaces from unit to unit and then allow for visitors spaces also. But again, that's not that. In developments like this, you, the one bedrooms may not be using any spaces and so they're both their spaces. There, a lot of space and visitor space are all visitor spaces, so. I would say it's around 25, but based on the, if you're just basing it on what the zoning regulations are saying, it's the balance of 116 to 109.
Okay, because one item of concern I I can tell right now is that there is no other place off property for parking. And you know, this might be more of a something that we discuss with the, you know, should this be approved with, you know, your folks as as operating it, that, you know, they're not gonna be, we would not be allowing parking on Main Street, obviously, and nor on King's College or Yale, you know, even though those are the closest ones, it's gonna have to be completely contained within the site. So whether that might, you know, I I know we're always optimistic that people are gonna be, you know, not having cars, you know, in maybe in other warmer climates, maybe, I don't know about this one. You know, I think it's just gonna have, we're just going to be looking for strict enforcement of the of the rules as far as, you know, what, you know, where cars are allowed, because there is no option for anything else that I can see based on this plot.
So we, this concern came up when we met with the neighbors and one solution we came up with was to basically assign the side streets, permit parking only for the the people that live in that neighborhood. So similar to what was done in downtown Fairfield, some of the downtown areas or the the district oriented areas in the lower Fairfield County is basically when it does become a problem, and it's not because of just one development, it's just because you you designated this downtown area or this area as a transit district. So you're gonna have, now that you're gonna have this apartment building, you're gonna have on Main Street, you're gonna have more development on retail, on the retail space. It's gonna be more, just to service these residents. So for them, to protect them and their in their side streets, we recommend that the police commission put in permit parking signs, or, you know, and the neighbors ask for that, and get permit parking signs and basically have permits. And then when they have an issue, to call the police department and have them ticketed or towed.
So those perm, under your, what you're thinking, envisioning is that the residents on King's College, Yale, they would be able to get these permits as opposed to, you know, not just the the residents of the development, right?
You're right, they would not be able to, only the only the residents themselves would be able to get the permits. And that's how, that's how things in these types of districts are dealt with in lower Fairfield County. I mean, you can go down to Fairfield and you'll see almost every street, the permit parking, because people just parked everywhere. But before they did that, to go to the beach, and they weren't even residents.
Yeah, I've been there. I had I I had to go down to Fairfield once and park my car for something and I ended up parking two miles away, but you know, actually, but that's a small price to pay for, you know, given the priority to the residents of the neighborhood. So, okay, we'll keep that in mind as a potential option. Okay, as far as traffic flow coming out onto Main Street. So I I heard it mentioned in the presentation that they're gonna reduce the size of the the esplanade in between the roads. So, you know, I know there's not much you could do about it, but I'll just express a concern. So, yeah, a left-hand turn is gonna have to go across Main Street, then through that narrow island and then on to, you know, Main Street heading north. Is that correct?
Yes.
That is correct.
So we we talked to the DOT and we ran some turning templates for here and that's where we came up with this. We're going to have to cut back this median to accommodate safe flow of, you know, ample flow to the, as you can see, the car kind of turns out and stays tight to the median because there will be on-street parking or whatever goes on here.
Okay, because that can be, all right, as long as you're coordinating with the DOT, because that that can be, I I don't want to see that lighted. I mean, it's too close to another light, light, traffic light intersection, but it's, viewers just get to monitor that because that could be dangerous at some point, making left-hand turns into that.
Right.
The other option that I can see, you can't really make a right-hand turn because then you have to make a U-turn up down at Hart's Corner, so.
Correct.
Yeah, development this size wouldn't want a traffic signal unless there was a safety concern. So something with this amount of traffic is not, the the DOT would not even entertain putting a traffic signal there.
Okay.
And just so you know that we have no choice but to deal with the DOT here as this is a state road. We were required to do an encroachment permit and have their review.
Okay. Actually, while you're on that screen, so one thing I was not clear about, and I'm looking at the satellite photo of the property as it exists right now. So the the smaller of the two buildings, is that the existing structure that's there? Or is that house being demolished and this is a new construction? I couldn't really tell.
So if you, I'll zoom in really close here so you can see a little bit better. I have kind of ghosted in the existing building. There's the perimeter, it's like a marketing drawing tools. So here's the existing building.
Okay.
Right here.
So it's essentially taking the same footprint of the existing building?
In fact, it's actually coming in, I think that's the existing building was like back here and we're putting it in line with the other buildings on Main Street. So the other existing building is a little bit further set back. And they wanted to bring it into line with the make, with the with what's going on on Main Street. So that that our our building, it looks like it belonged there with all the other buildings on Main Street.
And and again, it is a new building, that is a new building. We will be demolishing the old building and putting in a new one that we feel, you know, fits in with Main Street.
Okay. Um, actually, I think some people got my questions now that I'm looking for this. Okay. Sort of a interesting question, actually, I got two questions. One was, I didn't see any depictions of the layouts of the interiors. Can you talk a little bit about the interior structure? And just go through the counts as to which ones are, what the bedroom counts are and those type of things?
Yeah, this is Sealan Papa, I I'll take that. Sorry, Jim, just trying to share my screen.
No worries.
I don't know, I don't know them off the top of my head, but this is the breakdown. Right here. So in Building A, which is the large building, have 18 studios, 55 ones, or two bedrooms. And in Building B, we have six.
And. Six, six one bedrooms, correct?
Yes, yes, correct. And then diagrammatically, there are shaded differences on on the plans that you have.
Okay, but you haven't defined what the actual, you know, layouts are there, are they beyond just the outlines of what it's gonna, you know? I mean, I just curious like what the actual apartments will look like as far as the configuration. You know, is it just living room, kitchen, bathroom, bedroom? Is there a, any other rooms that are associated with it?
Well, because this is, I mean, because I'm working from home, I can bring up typical one, two bedroom for you. Is that how you you'd be interested in seeing?
Yeah.
There was a floor plan, I think, on in your in your blueprints. I thought I saw.
Typical typical units, yeah, they they must have been. Heather, do you, if Heather, if you're still online, do you know we have that in our presentation?
Not in this presentation. I can try to find something we've put up in the past.
Uh, I'll bring that up for you if you have any other questions. I'll bring up what a typical one-bedroom unit looks and two-bedroom.
It is in your application. I I saw a floor plan in there.
Do you know which document that is?
No, let me see.
I could probably find it someplace, because I see landscaping, lighting, I don't see interior. Might have missed it someplace. Okay, while you're looking for that, just one other general question. This is more industry related. Obviously, in the last month, lots of things have, you know, changed. And seeing this is the first application we've received since all of this happened, where we're talking about denser developments and even talking about, you know, commuting in an era where Metro North's traffic's down by 92%. How is the industry reacting? Are these types of developments seeing any problems? Are they still viable or are you running into, are are there, has any, there been any changes to what people are demanding?
I'll take this, this is Damian. You know, I think that with the uncertainty surrounding the coronavirus pandemic, the economic uncertainty today, where the design is going to be taken in the future is really still much of an unknown. I that, you know, we have had internal discussions, you know, just on amenity spaces and various just potential areas that we might be able to social distance more or at least put utilize spaces that we have a little bit more space within them. One positive here. One positive here, big positive is especially even on the first floor, which Sealan was saying, is that we have all these, we have many of these exterior units which have their own entrances. I think that that wound up being a huge positive. Um, and having more of a boot project here, I think will be a wonderful project versus something more three-hundred, four-hundred units. Um, you know, in, in, in general. Uh, so I think that, uh, you know, personally, I, I, and again, this is still, we're still dealing with territories, I think, in general, and no one, no one really would be able to give a definite decision. But I think a project such as ours would be looked upon very favorably. I think also trying to figure out how and incorporate more clean lines, as we're talking about, and uh, and um, and, and make people feel a lot more comfortable whether or not that the doors will have some kind of automatic opening or uh you can use your cell phone capability, you know, for certain processes. Uh, we're, we're talking about that right now. So very good question, very pointed to the times. Uh, Sealan, would you like to elaborate a little on that?
Um, I'm sorry, Damon, I was busy pulling up uh plans I wanted to look at. Um, if you.
This is Jay Hibansky. I just wanted to let the commission know the sample floor plans for a one and two-bedroom are on page A, uh, one-ten.
On the Main Street PDF, about two-thirds of the way down the page.
Okay, um, okay.
Uh, I'm hoping they look similar to the, like this is a typical one-bedroom that I'm showing you here.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the way that we lay out these buildings when we start off um is, is on a building module. So a typical uh one-bedroom would be twenty-five feet, twenty-four, twenty-five feet. And uh, in a one-bedroom, that will give you twelve, uh, twelve foot to twelve and a half foot for a living room sequence, which is living room and kitchen, and a bedroom sequence, which is bedroom and uh, and a en suite uh bathroom or shared bathroom. So they're fairly typical over these apartment units, and then the finishes inside differ depending on product.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, last question, um, what's the? Um, I'm assuming that, it, it appears that, uh, you know, there is minimal green space on this property. I'm assuming, I mean, and I know obviously it's, it's for more dense property, but just considering with the times we're in. Um, you know, any, obviously, there's not much choice, not much availability of recreation areas aside from that courtyard, which actually, that's very good. Uh, anything else that I'm missing here on the property that you would suggest, aside from the garden and the, and the courtyard, really?
And the dog park.
And the dog park, okay.
All right, I mean, looking at the various other multifamily projects in the surrounding area, I think we would be offering something here very unique um and uh fresh that I, we have not yet seen. You know, this kind of outdoor, indoor-outdoor living concept.
Okay. Okay, uh, that, oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, now I see it. Jeez, it, yeah, I see it now, the uh, the interior diagram. Okay, uh, any other questions from commissioners? Hearing none. Okay, let me go through the procedure again so that everybody's clear, and I see there's been a, um, there's a fair number of people that are still waiting here. So again, procedural, procedurally, as we've done right now, the application presented there, made their presentation its entirety on today, May twenty-seventh. Commissioners asked questions at the conclusion of their presentation, and I thank members for their attention uh during this. Um, Jay, has, um, I know we have received, and I think they've been distributed uh agency comments, and there's been some public communications that we have received. Shall we note them into the record?
Sure, yeah, this is Jay Hibansky. Um, I would say over the past maybe two or three days, maybe the beginning of the week, I've received uh what looks to be a, a template letter that's been signed, and they were uh mailed to our office, and I picked them up out of the, I picked a few more up earlier this morning, which we were scanned and uh emailed to all the commissioners, and they were sent to the computer services department to be posted online. Um, you know, I'm not sure if they got up, got up in time for the meeting tonight. Um, but everyone will have the opportunity, as this application will not be voted on, uh, will have an opportunity to see those, uh, if they didn't make it up uh in time for the, for the meeting tonight uh on the Planning and Zonings Remote Land Use P, um, Meetings webpage. Um, let's see, there's also uh two independently written letters. Um, and I'll, I'll just read the names of them for what I, for whatever I have, just so that I can get them into the record. We've got one letter of opposition from Jonathan Klein, uh, representing uh Mr. Kent C. Wahlberg. Uh, we have a letter of opposition from Karen Ivors, uh, who resides at eighty-six Kings College Place. And then we have the template led, uh, letter in opposition that was sent by uh Edwin Lubers, uh, Robert B. Holm, uh, Robert B. Cremini, or I'm saying Kremen. And then the last one was from Thomas Ivors. Uh, so those are the four. I know one came in much later this afternoon, and uh it was long past the deadline. Even the ones I got this morning, I tried to get up at that one. I just wasn't gonna have enough time to get on the website. But I'll make sure it gets up there in the next day.
Yeah, I would note, we had a copy of the template letter also from Edward Monroe and James and Diane Solomon. Um, so those are the ones that I see over here available on the website. And now, what we are going to do is public, everybody's had a chance, the public has had a chance to uh listen to the presentations. We will allow additional public comment uh in writing um by email uh to jahibansky@townstratford.com, correct?
Yes, that's correct. And if, uh, you can always go to the Planning and Zoning webpage under Staff Comments and find my email there.
And the deadline will be seven o'clock PM on Monday, June eighth. That gives us time to get it up on the, uh, on the website. Be aware, your communications will be put on the website. We will be meeting on June tenth, uh, seven PM, most likely a, a virtual meeting again. And at that point, we will, we will take into uh consideration public comment. The applicant will have an opportunity for uh rebuttal, as is our standard procedure. Uh, at that point, the public hearing would then be closed, and the commission will proceed um to deliberation and debate, uh, possibly with a vote, and we will follow the uh existing statutory calendar and deadlines. So with that said, unless there's any other comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion to continue this public hearing until June tenth.
Aye.
Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion.
Continue, intent? Jim Vigliotti?
Commit, motion by Mr. Vigliotti to continue. Is there a second? Please give your name.
Henrik.
Second by Commissioner Henrik. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, no. The ayes have it, five-zero, and this is continued. I thank uh all the applicants uh and everybody for their attention. Thank you for, for uh working through this. Uh, this time, we, we will make a motion to recess the public hearing and go into admin, our administrative session.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your all. Okay.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Have a good night. Be safe.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to uh recess the public hearing?
Dion Francis' motion.
Motion by Mr. Francis. Is there a second?
Second by Mr. Vigliotti.
Second by Mr. Vigliotti. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Uh, I oppose, no, carries unanimously. We recess it at nine-twenty-two PM. Okay, so let's go into our administrative agenda. And uh just members, please, when you make a motion or a second, please just give your name, because I can't, it's a little difficult to be seeing you and following the agenda at the same time, so bear with me. Okay, we're gonna leave uh all the petitions on the table, and so, since we haven't closed those public hearings. This will move to item two, approval of the minutes of the February twenty-sixth and April twenty-second, twenty-twenty meetings.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Henrik. Is there a second?
Second by Mr. Vacola.
Second of Mr. Vacola. Any discussion, changes, or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Carries unanimously. Uh, next item is the, any campsite reviews, Jay?
No, nothing new this month. Jay Hibansky here.
Excellent. Any enforcement studies? Anybody have any complaints or issues? Hearing none. Any accessory apartment applications?
Jay Hibansky here. No new, no new accessory apartment applications.
Okay. Uh, sediment and erosion will stay on the, on the table since we have to uh wait for the public hearing to close. Um, Jay, anything on village overlay district or bicycle parking regulations?
Uh, Jay Hibansky here. Uh, the town planner, Sussmita, has been working on uh drafting a more detailed framework for a village overlay district. Um, that is still underway, although creeping slowly forward as we try. The major component to that planning, long-range planning project is public participation. And we're trying to get a better understanding as to how we are going to uh provide meaningful public participation for the residents of Stratford for that project um as it goes, as we, as the, the future unfolds before us. So um, we're still working on that internally, and like I said, drafting that internal framework as to how we're gonna do that. Uh, regarding the bicycle parking regulation, that is still, uh, that is more just an internal project that the town planner has been working on with um the Planning Commission, uh, taking best practices as well as comparing the town of Stratford to some of the um, uh, what some other towns are doing in Connecticut, and I can tell you, there are very few that are doing it. So, uh, you know, seeing a project like we saw tonight on our agenda, um, you know, I think that's a, a good baseline for us to start thinking about uh and sharing some of those conversations, what um, what the private market feels will work. And then we've got an opportunity to really observe in real life. Well, maybe if, if this, that project goes forward, observe in real life, uh, how something like that might get utilized. So that's where those project, those planning projects stand.
Okay. There's more to come. Okay, um, executive session regarding five hundred North Avenue versus the town of Stratford. Um, Attorney Sullivan, you wanna bring us up to speed? I don't know if we're gonna go into executive session, but do you wanna give us an update?
Sure. Um, I wouldn't recommend an executive session at this time, but I'll just give you an update. Um, uh, Attorney Bellis filed a petition for certification in the five hundred um north case. Um, I think it's premature and will respond to it. Um, he also didn't file uh initially the proper paperwork. Um, what the appellate court does with that is they just send it back and give you fifteen days to refile it. He has refiled it. Um, but the, um, all the deadlines are suspended at the moment, so I will file a reply to his petition for certification. And then I know that Jay shared with all of you the record in the original case, um, which, uh, you know, you should review and be prepared to um, to discuss, but you know, it, it, we're not gonna schedule it right away. So any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but that's, that's where it stands at the moment.
Any questions for Attorney Sullivan? Okay. Anybody have anything on goal settings? Okay, uh, very quickly, um, a couple items for your attention. Number one, as you've heard me mention a couple times, we will plan, we will be planning a remote administrative session on June tenth, Wednesday, June tenth. Um, just because of the nature of how the, you have to handle these cases, we are not obliged to uh take public comment per the executive orders. However, um, we have an obligation to our constituents to uh hear their concerns. So we will um be giving them the time. That's why this procedure, and I thank Mr. Hibansky and Attorney Sullivan for working with me over the last few days to carve out this procedure, make sure we understand how we're gonna let it work to, um, you know, do our duty to the public. Um, so plan on coming for that meeting. If you cannot make it, uh, please let Mr. Hibansky know as soon as possible. Uh, that's why we've asked our alternates to uh attend these meetings so that they can be able to hear, uh, in case they're called upon to uh, to uh take over. So plan on that. Um, one other thing, the, um, I just want to acknowledge, uh, first gratefully, Carol Cabral, who's our guest secretary. Uh, some of you may know that Gail DeCilio, who is our, our regular secretary, uh, lost her husband last week, Louis DeCilio. Um, so as I sent out a note to everybody, please keep, uh, keep her in your thoughts and prayers, and we look forward to when Gail can uh rejoin us. Um, we also, I know Attorney Sullivan, uh, you lost a member of your family recently, an uncle you had mentioned to us. So, um, we do all send our condolences to you as well. I know these are tough times for all of us, and we are one zoning family, and uh we wanna, let's keep all, keep everybody in our, in our thoughts, and uh best wishes for everybody's families as we go through these times.
Thank you.
Um, that's all. Uh, one last reminder, you, in the period, because we did not go to a vote here, you may be contacted by constituents or others um on this project. Uh, your obligation is to consider the facts that are in the record. Uh, so be very judicious with your uh conversations with anybody that might call you. By all means, share any information. Um, do not commit because we have not heard the public's comments, we have not heard the rebuttal, the record is incomplete. So I would just be very careful in your discussions with other members, especially for those of you that have not um sat on these uh types of applications before. Anything else from any other members? Mr. Vigliotti? Oh, we can't hear you.
I, I, Jay had his hand up. I was pointing at Jay.
Oh, I can't see Jay. For some reason, I got a six-screen here, and I can't see Jay. Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, yes, Jay Hibansky here, and I'll just also um reiterate, reiterate what Chairman Solhavy said. Uh, if anyone gets any, any letters or correspondences, whether they are relevant or irrelevant, um, I would recommend that uh you forward them to me. I'll make sure if we get any duplicates, that we don't have to resend those back out. But if it's new, I'll make sure that all the commissioners are all getting the same information to base their considerations on. Uh, I would also recommend that if anyone is getting, gets phone calls from constituents, uh, best practice is to always recommend that they uh participate as we've outlined here. Uh, email, have them email me any concerns, and I'll make sure that all the, all the commissioners have the opportunity to hear all the same information. Thank you.
Okay. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Mr. Francis?
Quick question. So, uh, just to be clear on the procedure, so on June tenth, we're gonna have public uh comments and concerns, and then we're voting on, on, on this project?
Possibly. We will, we will take whatever co, uh correspondence we get and enter it into the record. Um, the petitioner will then have a chance to offer rebuttal uh to anything that is stated in the public comments, be they in favor or opposition. And then, once we're done with that, we will move to close the public hearing. Uh, we may vote that night. Uh, depends how the discussion goes. Um, if we are not ready to, we can always delay it, but we have, correct me if I'm wrong, Jay, we have sixty days to make a decision, so we'll follow that calendar. So we, we may be prepared, uh, but it's not a foregone conclusion that we will vote that night.
Good.
All right, one more question. Now, with the, the uh, the layout and the blueprints. were they emailed to me or something? Because I didn't get those.
All of that should be on the, uh, the, the website.
Yes, this is Jay Hibansky.
They were not emailed, no.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, as of February, no, we haven't mailed any hard copies of anything. Everything gets posted on the remote land use, uh, meetings page. So, it should essentially be a digital copy of the, uh, the, the hard, the hard copy that I have sitting here with me, uh, should all be up on there. So, I know it's not always convenient to have to be looking on the small screens, but, you know, we're trying to have as less contact and less physical, uh, paper to be ushered, pushed around. So, we're just going to have to deal with that for the time being. But, uh, Dion, let me know if you have any problems accessing it and, uh, I can walk you through it, okay?
All right, definitely. Thanks.
Okay. Motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, motion to adjourn.
First by Mr. Henrik, second Mr. Francis. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Carries unanimously. We're out of here at nine, uh, 34. Have a good night, everybody. Thanks for your attendance. Thank you.
All right, everybody be safe out there.
Amen. Be safe, everyone. Thanks.
Good night.
Good night.
All right.
What do I do next? Okay.